You're alive, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you and good evening, everyone, to the Conservation Commission Regular Meeting of Tuesday, July 20th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Ms. Gibbons, please call the roll.
And Ann Connaughton III.
Here.
John Bishand.
Here.
John Castle Santa.
Here.
Bernadette Conway.
Here.
Richard Laverrier.
Present.
Alan Paskowicz.
Here.
Andrea Sadil.
Here.
Jeff Wagner.
Here.
So I think we have a fully seated commissioners, no alternates required this evening. Item three of the agenda, public participation. Each participant is limited to two minutes. John, do we have anyone on the line waiting to speak?
No one on with us this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's proceed to item four, acceptance of minutes for the regular meeting of June the 15th, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections from the commissioners? I don't see anyone who has their hand up. So may I have a motion to accept the meetings as written, meeting minutes as written from June 15th, 2021, regular meeting?
A motion to accept the meeting minute of June 15th, 2021 as written.
Moved by Commissioner Laverrier, may I have a second?
Second by Commissioner Paskowicz.
Second by Commissioner Paskowicz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Abstentions? Okay, minutes passed. Unanimous. Okay, moving on to new business. Application number 2021-17, modification of application 2017-14 at 549 Cedar Street. Is the applicant present, Mr. Hinkley?
He is, I see him on the list.
So does the applicant have a presentation he wishes to present to the commission at this time?
I can go over the proposed work.
I. And title for the record, please.
My name, my name is Daniel Saramet, I'm project manager at AECOM, which is a Techtron's consulting company.
If I may just interject, Mr. Chairman, Dan, maybe you just want to discuss what the original permit was for, just so that some of the commissioners may not remember, be a little foggy and that way, and then you can just go into the modification request if you'd like.
Certainly. The, the original permit in 2017 was for a larger scale project. It was soil remediation at the site consolidation and capping in an, under an engineered control in the, the rear of the 549 Cedar Street property. That was the original application and that was, that was also done with Connecticut Deep approval of the engineer control. The, I, I, I do have, you know, other slides and photos if we wanted to recap that work that was already done. But the, as far as the modification, there was a first modification done in 2018 and that was for a pilot test for groundwater treatment, which involved brush clearing and well installation in an area adjacent to that soil remediation work. And the proposed modification tonight is very similar to that. It's additional brush clearing and well installation to further the groundwater treatment work in that, in that area.
Mr. Saramet, I do have a quite few questions. What is precipitating the additional wells? Are you finding from the existing wells still some contamination from the volatile organic compounds that are beneath the soil? Is that basically you're finding more contamination, you're expanding the area where you think the plume is underneath the soil?
We, the work that was done so far was a pilot test. We do, we did know that the plume was larger than we, we knew the extent of the plume and the work that was done a few years ago was a pilot test. So it was, it was designed to treat a portion of the plume and to evaluate the remedial technology being used. And so this is, this work proposed is an expansion on that to, to go a little bit further down gradient and to treat more of the, the higher weathered bedrock closer to the surface than the pilot test.
So can you go through for the commission, what these circles mean? You mentioned there's seven new wells going to be put in, seven, not eight, because I think this is the title. And then just sort of paragraph 1.1 on purpose and need, I think there's seven, not eight.
Yes, yeah, I just caught that today as well. There are seven proposed wells and those are the wells with the, I think they're red, sorry, I'm colorblind.
Yeah, I believe it's one with the red circles.
Yeah, the red circles are the new proposed wells. And then that one additional well down gradient, the yellow dot, EW2S and I. That's a couplet, so those are the, the seven, the seven new wells.
What does that mean if it's a couplet? I see the red circle and the blue dot, I guess that's a treatment well. And then I see a blue dot like MW42D, it's got the, the bullseye on, it says it's an existing well. So what's the difference between that, those two and the one that's marked yellow? And there's another one downstream, 41D. What's the differences between all those, those markers?
Those are just marking, you know, what type of monitoring well, whether it's strictly a monitoring well for sampling, or whether it's an injection well or an extraction well. So for example, MW42D is just a monitoring well, we would only be taking samples from that. EW2S and I is an extraction well couplet. So we would, we would be pulling water from that well while injecting into another well such as like 45, 45S is an injection well. And the, the four IW1W wells, those are injection wells. Yep, thank you.
So question, if I may, so you're going to extract the water, test it, treat it and put it back into the ground? Is that the way this works?
We're going to extract the water, add amendments to it, remedial amendments to it, treating it, and then injecting it back into the ground. You know, we do already have, we would do baseline testing before we do this remediation. So we would, we would know the concentrations of what we're dealing with. And that, that process of extracting, adding remedial amendments and reinjecting is identical to what we did three years ago on the pilot test. And that, that's something that's approved by Connecticut Deep and done under a remediation permit through Connecticut Deep, that extraction and reinjection.
So what are these amendments? What does that mean when you say you're adding amendments? What type, are we talking chemicals here or explain to the commission what that means?
Yeah, sort of. It's, so the, the groundwater is contaminated with VOCs, like such as trichloroethylene. So what we're adding is emulsified vegetable oil and lactate, which, which basically degrade, basically rot, use up all the oxygen and make the conditions more favorable for bacteria to degrade the contaminants, the VOCs. We also, we also inject some bacteria specifically bred to do that process, to do that degradation. So what we, what we inject kind of gets the conditions right for the most, most advantageous conditions for the bacteria to degrade the contaminants.
Thank you. So basically what comes out will go back in?
Yes, what comes out will go back in. And we know from the pilot test that once it's treated with those amendments, it will, you know, it will quickly break down and clean up.
And so what is the, the long term? Okay, we, we go ahead with this. When would this be, here I solve, when you've met the remedial objectives, what's the criteria for that?
Right, so that's something that we, we work on with the Connecticut Deep. There are, basically, we're trying to clean up the source material enough so that by the time this water goes offsite, it meets standards set by Connecticut Deep. So this, what we're proposing now is the second phase. And we anticipate, we anticipate a third phase two years, two to three years from now, we anticipate a third phase treating north of here, where we, we also know there's contamination that extends north of here. And that third phase would install additional wells to treat that part of the source area as well.
Mr. Saramet, if I can ask real quick, this is all also, this property is under the Connecticut Transfer Act, I believe as well, correct?
Yes, correct.
So prior owner has to remediate the property. Just so the commission is aware.
So there is a third phase coming. How does it work out with the permits? Permits are generally five years or that just, you, you can waive since it's in control of Connecticut Deep. As far as, how does it work as permit expiration? This looks like a multi-year effort. How does that work from a permitting standpoint?
Do you mean the?
Started in 2014, I believe, or even earlier?
Do you mean the Newington permit or the state permit for injection?
Us here, as far as the commission is concerned.
So what, what we're, what we're coming to you for now is work that will be done this summer. And then the work that's planned for two or three years from now, you know, that, that doesn't need to be done as a modification. That could be, that could be another whole new permit because of, you know, it's a little more, it's not seven wells, it might be more along the lines of, of, you know, 25 wells and a little more expansive brush clearing. So I, I wouldn't necessarily expect that to be a modification or an agent approval. You know, that, that could be done through Newington as a, as a whole new permit.
I got a question, you mentioned about a swell. I'm sure, is that this checkered, is that a road where this EW1S is and W dash one? Is that that swell that's referenced in the narrative? Is that you mentioned you have to go into a swell area, intermittent water course? Where is that on this map?
That, that goes right through the middle of all those wells.
I believe that's the double dash line there, you see the kind of thin, yep.
Yep, yeah, that's it. I don't have control of the pointer, but yeah, that is, that's an intermittent stream drainage swell. It's, it's, it's usually dry. I had some photos of it in the application, but you know, under, under rains, heavy rains, it, it does flow water.
It's more, it really is a drainage swell, but it is intermittent, correct?
I know it's rained a lot this, this summer. Is that going to impede the project or delay anything? You know, poorly drained soils getting in, getting to drill, it's going on like 50 feet, I believe, total, down.
Yeah, we're going down to 50 feet. It, it shouldn't affect, it shouldn't affect the work. I mean, we're, you know, we can, there's a, there's a pretty good access way in there and we would, we would, if it was muddy and we needed to, we'd use crane mats or plywood to get our, the, the drill rig in there. It's a track mounted rig, so it, you know, it could go, it's pretty easy on the ground and it can go through some wetter soil. But I mean, we, we hope to do this work in August and hopefully it dries up, but you never know.
As far as access, you said it's partially paved and basically dirt. Can you, where would that access road be on this map? Is that something permanent or something that's going to grow over when you're done?
Yeah, there's, there's an existing access road. It has gravel up until a certain point and then it's, it's just kind of an established hard packed road. It does have some growth in it. I believe I have one photo of it in the application. We would, like I said, we do anticipate more work here over, over the next few years. And, you know, looking at taking out the road and, you know, establishing vegetation everywhere. It might be something we would look at when we're, when we're really wrapping up the site.
Okay, I'm going to open up to the other commissioners for their questions at this time. Thank you, Mr. Saramet.
I had a few questions, Mr. Chairman. John Bishand.
Commissioner Bishand.
And mostly just good education. Did you say you're injecting bread into the, into the holes?
It's emulsified vegetable oil and lactate. So it's, it's a, it's a carbon, yeah, I mean, it's oil and.
This would be considered a bio remediation, correct?
Yes, absolutely, in situ bio remediation.
That's really interesting and that could attack those serious volatile organic compounds, huh?
Yes, yes, we've, it's, it's kind of a standard, well-accepted approach for this type of contamination. We did the pilot test here and I've, I've done it on other sites as well.
And this concentration of all these wells in this one spot, this was a major plume or this is just the first one? I know you said there'd be another one coming, but.
Yes, this is, the, the pilot test area is the, the southern or down gradient extent of the plume. And it is where concentrations were relatively high. And that's, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to attack it first to start treatment and, you know, start with, start knocking down the highest concentrations.
So I would think that that groundwater would be moving more westerly towards the water course, but you're saying it's moving southerly.
The plume in this area, the plume, the plume goes from north to south and, and the well, these wells and EW2S is kind of at the southern end. And then from there, it does go, we do see it going to the west down toward the wetlands. There's, you know, it is, it didn't, we're, the, we're, we're primarily treating the bedrock, which, you know, is fractured in this area. And the, the, the flow in the fractured bedrock, you know, sometimes doesn't move exactly the way you think it would. It's kind of follows the fractures. But yeah, over, over here, it, it does, it does head, head to the south. And then around that 41D area, it, it goes to the west. And then actually later on, we do see it go south again, kind of parallels the railroad tracks.
Would, would you say, and this is maybe just a guess on your part, or maybe it's a, it's easily known, but would you say the majority of what was in the groundwater there has already moved offsite? Or would you say it's still just, it's still perched in there or still stuck in there?
Yeah, we, we do, we do see higher concentrations in, on the site still. So a lot of the mass is still staying on site. You know, compared with the, the concentrations drop orders of magnitude as you go, as you go down gradient offsite. So a lot of it is.
Yeah, but its original source now is mounded up, so it shouldn't be still leaching into the ground further, correct?
We, in around 2011, 2012, we conducted soil remediation in this area to remove the source material. That I, I, I wasn't working too heavily on the project. I know we, you know, we did go to the commission at that time. And there were some soil remediation areas in this area where you see the wells to remove that, you know, the real source material so that it wouldn't leach any more contaminants into the bedrock.
All right, just a couple more questions. So that mound, that was different material, that was metals, I believe, then, correct?
Oh, yes, correct. The, the engineer control was a completely different issue, different, different type of contamination. Yeah, it was metals, pHs and some petroleum.
And, and so does the VOCs, are they suspended in the groundwater or do, or do they float on the surface of the groundwater? Do they go up and down with the height of the groundwater or are they, or are they mixed all throughout it?
They, they are, they do tend to go down. That's why they've gone down into bedrock in this area.
And then the last question, what is a couplet?
Oh, it's, a couplet is just two wells right next to each other at different depth intervals. So here EW2S and I is shallow and intermediate. And one might be from 15 to 25 feet below grade and another one from 30 to 40 feet below grade. It's just to try and get at the different fractures.
All right, thank you very much. It's good, good, nice education.
Absolutely.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah, Commissioner.
Mr. Paskowicz.
You mentioned bedrock and you mentioned fractures in the bedrock.
Yep.
Could you please tell me what type of rock is this bedrock?
In this area, it's the Hartford red silt stone, which is, it's a softer rock, so it's heavily fractured, especially near the top in, in the shallow area where we're working.
Would this rock be of a specific type that could be qualified as a fractured rock to hold an aquifer?
I mean, it, it is below groundwater.
Let me rephrase the question. When you go initially to evaluate an area, do you look at mapping or statistics or surveys prior to your investigation to determine if there's an aquifer in the area that's known?
We have done over the history of this project, we have done a, a well survey of the area. I'm not sure if that's what you're getting at, if anyone uses this groundwater for residential purposes or irrigation or anything. We have done that well survey. The, the, the work on the site predates me, I believe we did it in the early 2000s. And we found that the only well in the area, I believe, was across the, across the tracks in New Britain. Someone had a well that they used for irrigation and I believe they discontinued using that well.
I mean, it's getting kind of specific, but do you recall the depth of that well?
I would, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, I'm, what I'm driving at a little closer to the question is some wells are just a dug well that are shallow and some are artesian, as you know. So I'm trying to get some information if there possibly is an aquifer down there that could be impacted by this VOC material.
Right, so another, another part of our work is working with Connecticut Deep to address ecological concerns. So we do have mapping of, you know, where this groundwater goes. And I, I think I had a brief description in the application that the, the groundwater from the site comes to the surface in wetlands, south and west of the site and eventually goes to Webster Brook.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else?
Mr. Wagner.
Commissioner Wagner.
What started the plume? Was it the business there and back in the day or they, they just dumped there?
They, they used the area for equipment storage and, and some of it evidently leaked.
Okay.
But yeah, it was, you know, before people started paying attention.
Yeah. Another question now, well, we had to worry about that or is it so deep, the fractured rocks? Is that water potentially getting into Piper Brook? Or is it just so below the water line that it's not seeping into Piper Brook or the wetlands down in that area? That, that southwest area.
Right, so that is something that we're currently working with Connecticut Deep on. The, the water does eventually come out in the wetlands, but it is at much lower concentrations than we see it in the groundwater in this area. And so that is something that we're still working with Connecticut Deep on, you know, establishing site-specific criteria to address ecological concerns for where the groundwater comes out as well as, you know, this treatment to reduce the concentrations in the source area, which will propagate down gradient.
Yeah, because that's a little more elevated than the Piper Brook area. I could see it going down into that area. And would they tell us the contamination levels in the future if it's seeping into Piper Brook? Are we going to be updated on that?
We, I mean, we, we, we do have previous reports of groundwater, surface water studies that we have done before. There, there is a bit of a divide to the west of the site where this, this area we're talking about here goes south. I, I thought it was Webster Brook to the south.
Webster Brook.
Yeah.
Just a, a note for everyone. Yeah, if, if none of you are aware, both Piper Brook and Webster Brook are on the DEP contaminated list.
Okay, thank you.
Just so to clear, they, they both have been for a number of years that I'm aware of.
Webster Brook is generally considered further south, like almost to New Britain Avenue, but they could run parallel on the tracks there. There could be a divide there where Newington is divided, where our base drainage basins go two different ways, so.
Yeah, the north.
Mr. Christian Wagner, do you have any further comments?
No, I have no more comments, thank you.
All right. Anyone else at the commissioners, Commissioner Bishand?
Yeah, I have one more question if everyone, if no one else has a question, yeah.
Go ahead, please, you have the floor.
I was just curious and to follow up on Commissioner Wagner's comment. The median, the median or the median or the average depth of these groundwater, of the groundwater, is it higher than the median depth or height of the water in Piper Brook or in the wetlands there? Are we, are you lower than it or still a little bit higher than it?
No, the height, the elevation of the groundwater on site is higher than those brooks and down in the wetlands. So there, that's why the, the hydraulic gradient does flow down, down to the wetlands and to the brook.
Okay, so it's not welling up underneath, it's actually flowing through, through the side.
So the, the groundwater from the site daylights in certain wetland areas, south and west of the site.
Thanks.
Okay, any other commissioners wishing to speak? Mr. Laverrier.
Yes, Richard here. So I, this is like, can you put the map back up, please? I, I don't see it. Thank you. Thank you. So number one, number one, this this project, a lot of it is going on within the wetlands. Is that correct?
Uh, the wells are being installed within the wetland buffer. The the intermittent stream, just that, you know, three or four foot wide intermittent stream. Uh, is what was classified as wetlands proper. Um, so there's no work in the wetland. The intermittent stream itself.
But a wetland proper?
Correct, correct, Commissioner Lavie. The ditch itself is is the wetland proper and the buffer area is outside of the ditch. And the wells are being installed in the buffer.
What's going on with those existing wells? Like, what is the purpose of the existing well?
The existing wells will be used to, um, for monitoring, will take samples. Uh, they'll be used to. Check for connectivity. You know, when we drill the new wells, well, we can see if they're connected to the old wells by fractures by. Uh, testing the water level in the existing wells. Some of the existing wells were designated as injection. Um, or extraction wells, so we could, uh, inject or extract from those wells. During this work.
And what's going on with the new wells? What's the purpose of those? If you could just break it down for me?
Sure. Uh, the new wells are also injection and extraction. Uh, wells, the the EW two couplet. Uh, is being installed because that's further south, so we we. Will be able to see what the concentration is, uh, further south and then also, uh, treat that area. And the the IW one W one, two, three, four wells are. Shallower wells, they're they're, uh, they're still in bedrock, but they're shallower than our existing wells. Uh, during our pilot test, we. We had a a shallow zone that we did not get as good of results in. So we're installing these wells in shallow bedrock to. Uh, try to influence the shallow bedrock zone more, so.
Thank you. What are you, what you said injecting? What what are you injecting into the wetland?
We're we're injecting water and, uh, emulsified vegetable oil into the bedrock. Which is, you know, anywhere from ten to fifty feet below, uh, the wetland and the buffer. Uh, itself below the surface, so, uh, anything we're injecting. Uh, does not come out to the surface. If, uh, if we do see breakthrough, we would, uh, reduce our injection rates and pressures. So that the goal is to keep our treatment down in the bedrock where the contamination is.
Do you have an environmental study for what injecting something into the wetlands would hypothetically do to the natural environment?
Uh, I mean, this 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 remediation technology has been widely, uh, used. What it, what it does is, um, it basically rots and eats up the, uh, oxygen. Um, if it were on the surface, you know, it would, it would break down pretty quickly. And the, and. Wetlands are. Typically low. Oxygen anyway, but we have. I mean, we have, uh, we have had other sites in in wetland areas. Um, where this remediation technology has also been used. And again, the the goal is to keep the treatment well below the surface.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
No, I'll just say the material that we're injecting, uh, once it's injected, it comes out of emulsion. So it stays in the bedrock, uh, and and, you know, does its work down there. It doesn't. It doesn't, uh, flow down gradient. You know, with with the rest of the water that eventually does come out in the wetland. Uh, once it loses its its, uh, emulsion, it it sticks where it is.
Well, I appreciate your answer. It's very confusing to me, but, um, uh, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Pass which here.
Krishna Paskowicz, you have the floor.
How do you determine the distance between the injection well and the extraction well? And also, what is the timing between when you put the emotion in the injection well? And you pull out to monitor the effectiveness of it out of the extraction well? Is that accurate statement?
Let me see if I can describe it. So we, um, we chose the spacing. You know, based on the spacing we had, similar to the spacing we had for our original pilot test, which is. Uh, I believe it's about seventy-five feet. Uh, down gradient, so along the fractures in the bedrock. Uh, when we, when we did the first pilot test, we were able to inject. And when we extracted from a well seventy-five feet away, we saw that injected material. Uh, within about twenty hours of, um, the injecting. So we were able to. Pull it through that treatment cell. Uh, so we would expect similar, uh, for our, for for our future work. Um, as far as evaluating the effectiveness. In down gradient wells, we would do a baseline sampling before the injections to get the baseline concentrations. And then we would sample again, uh, three, six, twelve and twenty-four months later. And, you know, we would typically start seeing, uh, results at three to six months. Reduction and reduction in contaminant concentrations.
Thank you. That clarifies the, uh, schedule of your process very, very well. I've got a better handle on. On how it operates. Thank you.
Yeah, at the, uh, with the biological remediation, it it does take, uh, some time to see effects. But, um, you know, we're not using like harsh chemicals. That would work faster either.
Excellent.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Costa Santo, we've not heard from you this evening. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, really no, because this is, uh, I think I remember the initial application on this. And it's being overseen by deep and most, most of this is just more of an update. For the commission and it isn't in our purview to supervise what's going on there. Uh, on an operational basis, so, and, you know, everybody else that has asked questions. Have, you know, basically, uh, covered any concerns that I've had and. Mr. Seramet has been very forthcoming with all his answers and, um, his detailed explanations are very much appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Conne, do you have any questions for the, uh, for the applicant?
No, I don't. I think I'm all set.
Okay, so, uh, finally, Commissioner Conway, we've not heard from you this evening. How are, you have any questions for the applicant?
No, I don't. It's been a very thorough review and I appreciate that. I learned a lot, but no, I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Seramet, I do have two questions. Mistake, do you want to say something?
Go ahead, Andrea, sorry.
Yeah, um, I just want a question that I had in section three dot three. Uh, of the narrative, bedrock installation, soil and water management. It says that, um, soil drums will be removed from the facility for offsite disposal within two to three months. Now, is this soil the one that you're drilling out to get to the well that's going to be removed? And why is it taking so long, two to three months to do that?
Uh, yes, that's just excess soil from the drilling. Uh, it, we are doing, um, kind of a phased approach to the well installation. Uh, we will, we were going to install one of the wells, uh, and do. Collect some geophysical data using, uh, basically, uh, sending an instrument down the hole. To look at the fractures, uh, with a variety of sensors. And that would help us determine the depth intervals of the other wells. So basically, uh. You know, it it's a longer process. We would, we, it's a be, be a, uh, two mobilizations, uh, to go out there and it might be. It might be a a month in between by the time we get the lead data and look at the data. So we just wanted to get rid of the drums, uh, all at once. And the drums, the soil also needs to be, um, sampled and characterized. Uh, and so that would put us in the the two to three month, uh, timeframe.
Okay, and my final question is, in the next paragraph, you talk about the communication between the well and the aquifer. How does that work? What does that physically mean or explain that to, uh? Lamest terms, what does that, how does that work?
Sure, yeah, just, uh, it just means how how easily the water can flow. Into or out of the well, or how easily our our injected, uh, material can flow out of the well, so. You know, if there, if there are fractures, if there are bigger fractures, then it's it's better connected to the the aquifer. Uh, the groundwater. If it's, you know, if it's solid, tight rock with no cracks, then it's it's not well-connected.
Okay. Um, I have no further questions, uh, Bishop Bashant.
Yeah, just to summarize, just from my own understanding, uh, because the the term, you know, extraction sounds like. Like what it means, obviously, but we're, you're extracting water to make space for what you're injecting. Is that? Is that a fair summary?
We're, yeah, we're extracting water, uh, to make space.
Encourage that movement of the material you're putting in.
Yeah, and then we can, uh, better direct what we're putting in. We have more control over. Uh, what we're injecting rather than it just, you know, spreading out in a circle from our injection well. If we extract down gradient and we pull most of the material down gradient, so we. Um, have a, a, a kind of a cell that we're treating.
And so there's another summary and you can say, you could tell me if it's accurate, but the remediation is occurring underground. It's not, we're not pulling the water out to remediate it and put it back in.
Correct, yeah, the the, uh, the breakdown happens in the ground.
All right, thanks. I I find it fascinating and, um, I'm glad it's getting done.
I guess, uh, thank you for the, Mr. Seramet, for your time. As for the commission. Um, we have to decide if we'd like to go with agent approval, if they see very well explained. Does the commission feel that we can turn this over to Mr. Hinkley and and Mr. Seramet can work out the details? I'm certainly in favor of moving forward with agent approval based presentation, uh, this evening. Uh, does anyone on the commission ever feel differently?
Commissioner Paskowicz, I feel that, uh, they satisfied, um. All specifics that I would think of and also the commissioners. I think it's time to maybe take a roundtable consensus and see where we stand on this.
Commissioner Bashant.
Um, what are we talking about agent approval for? Future wells or?
I believe he's asking for agent approval for this application, what he talked about tonight, the seven new monitoring wells. Bedrock monitoring wells. And if you guys choose to do that, I believe I I did a draft motion, you should make that motion and and act on it.
Well, if it's before us now, couldn't we just approve it now?
No, you would have to wait, you'd have to wait till the next meeting. If you, if you allow me to do an agent approval, I can administer it. If you choose not to, then it would be before you at the August meeting and you would take action at that time.
Okay, so I, for this application, I'm fully, uh, on board. So if if it was just for that, I would say go for it. Future ones I would rather us hear about first, maybe, unless it's very similar to this exact one here, you know.
Yeah, agent approval is fine with me, Mr. Chairman. That would be a good way to handle it.
Okay, um, let me ask this question. Are there any objections from any of the commissioners not to do agent approval?
No, I would just ask, is there, I would just ask, is there any rush for it though? I mean, if we're, if we was, if if they lost one week, is that a big deal? But but I have no objection, no.
I'm sorry, who's going, Chair, Mr.? Okay, they're gonna lose a month, not a week, because.
I'm sorry.
Act on it till next month's meeting. It's an ongoing project that they're they're working on that they, you know, like there's continuity, momentum. So that's why I felt that an agent approval, based on these circumstances with the information. We were given tonight would be the appropriate way to go.
You were next.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I'm concerned though about, like. Any kind of artificial injection of material into the wetland. Is something that, uh, you know, it's it's concerning and frankly, I I really don't know much about this. Project and, um, I mean, I'd like to echo, uh, what Commissioner Bashan said that perhaps. A a delay may, you know, I mean, perhaps tabling it may be something that, uh, should be considered.
Commissioner Bashan, go ahead.
I'll, I'll try to alleviate some of, uh, Commissioner Lavie's, uh, concerns. I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm certainly fine with the agent approval. After hearing the arguments for and against or for, uh, and I think when you may be confused with this, uh. Discussion about, uh, injecting into the wetlands where he's injecting into a stormwater, uh, gully, basically. It's only intermittent drainage swale there. And the water doesn't end up into the wetland proper until, well, the the real wetland proper, the valuable wetland, which is. Which we, we don't, most, most of us would consider to valuable wetland until it's filtered through the groundwater and goes through the groundwater and everything. So what we're, he's injecting into is just. Below this little stormwater swale, if you will. So maybe that helps. I hope it does.
Mr. Paskowicz.
Yeah, um, in some point in our discussion here with the, uh, Mr. Seramet, I believe. It was brought to attention of, uh, Christian Bashan that this was a bio remediation. Process that's been accepted practice as a more organic. Type of, uh, material use in the ground. Whereas before, there's probably materials that weren't as organic and effective. To not affect other water, so I'm, I'm fine with this. Staff approval hundred and ten percent because it is a bio remediation. I wanna, I wanna make that a effective statement.
Thank you, Commissioner Paskowicz. All right, so, um, Mr. Secretary. Uh, I'd like to have a motion for application twenty twenty-one dash seventeen. For modifications to wetland permit twenty seventeen dash fourteen to install an additional seven bedrock monitoring wells within the. Review area, five forty-nine Cedar Street, Newington, Connecticut, the owner being SKRG Realty, the applicant Textron Incorporated.
Was that the motion, Mr. Chairman?
No, I'm requesting to the application, you give, you present the motion to the commission.
Sure, uh, motion, uh, for modification to wetland permit two zero one seven dash one four to install an additional seven bedrock. Monitoring wells to within the unrestricted area at five four nine Cedar Street, Newington, Connecticut, owner. SKRG Realty applicant Textron Inc.
Now, you're moving to allow the wetland agent, please continue.
Yeah, oh, my bad, sorry. Uh, motion to, uh, allow the. Motion to allow the wetland agent pursuant to section 21, 1, 2.1 of the regulations to administer this application as an administrative approval.
May I have your second?
A second, Commissioner Wagner.
Second, Commissioner Wagner, final discussion. Ms. Gibbons, please call the roll.
All right, Commissioner Ancona.
Hi.
Commissioner Bishant.
Yes.
Commissioner Castasanta.
Aye.
Commissioner Conway.
True.
Commissioner Laverrier.
Abstained.
Commissioner Paskowicz.
Approved.
Chairman Seidel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Yes.
The motion passes, I think it was the five, six, and one abstention?
Correct.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Serment. Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. On the new business, item B, application 2021-18, regulated activity at 72 Wells Drive North. Hinkley is the applicant available?
He is here and available. I'll just give you a quick, brief background before you start. I got a call that this gentleman was cutting some trees in his backyard, so I stopped by. He had cut some trees that, I sent some pictures in. Lawn looked rotted and dead in the middle, and, you know, he had some concerns about the, the safety of his house, et cetera. So we had a discussion on site. He stopped all the work, you know, I explained to him the wetlands in the regulated area. He stopped his work. And he's brought this application before you. There's a number of parts to it. As you can see, I think tonight, or going forward, you probably just want to deal with, with the, the cutting and the filling aspects of, of his project, and then potentially move forward to modify the permit in the future when he comes forward with some more detailed information on some of his other aspects of the project. But otherwise, I'll turn it over to Mr. Darren.
Thank you. And first, I want to apologize to the commission that I was not aware that I would need a wetlands permit to pull down a couple of trees. One of them was literally right on the edge of my grasp before the wooded section. The other one was nearby, just a few feet. Can everybody hear me okay?
Point of order, Mr. Darren, your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, yes, absolutely. My name is Jason Darren. I reside at 72 Wells Drive North. I am the sole owner of the property.
Okay, please continue.
Okay, thank you. So yes, as, as Mr. Hinkley had, had inferred, I, this kind of started last year with some of those very strong storms that were late in the summer. Several large branches just missed my house. And, and so I was very concerned. It's very, the, the main concern was a very large beech tree, probably 85 feet with most of the growth up top. And so just for financial purposes, I couldn't pull it down last year, was finally able to do it this year, and already some more tree branches had come down. So I had somebody come in, a licensed tree removal expert, and, and so when I was having one tree taken down, and, and the purpose was one tree, and then there was already one dead, completely dead tree on the side between mine and my neighbor's property, which I received permission from them to do. The, the arborist noticed another beech tree nearby that was actually even more rotted than this one. And so he had said, you really should take this down. If it blows the wrong way, it could take out my neighbor's house or my house, depending on which way it blows. So I believe it was because that second tree was a little bit more visible after the first one came down, was where, you know, certainly there's some noise and everything involved. And so, yes, Mr. Hinkley paid me, paid me a visit. We had a great discussion about it. And, and so the reason, really for all of this is just for safety purposes. I'm not looking to, to clear cut anything else, to cut down any trees beyond this, is really just for the safety purpose. And what I was not aware of was my, my tree guy started to chip some of the wood there. And even though it's the actual tree that was there, it sounds like that may need to be removed. There's also some large logs that are there. I was initially hoping that I could just kind of, you know, some of them I'll pull out certainly. Other ones, I was hoping to kind of shore up. It's a little hard to see, like, a lot of this will come out. And what you see there, most of those branches are already out. When we stopped everything, we pulled everything out of the brook. Certainly, we didn't want to impede anything there. That was never, I was never gonna leave it, but you could see in these pictures here, it's, it's rotted all the way up the tree. And I wasn't even aware of, of this level of rot. I just knew that there, there was quite a bit going on. So, um, basically, this wood here, I'm just gonna use, some of this I'm just gonna use for firewood, chop it myself, but the stuff that's further down towards the brook, I was gonna try to pull as much of that out as I could. None of it was gonna stay in the brook. And then a couple of the pieces, I was, you could kind of see the slope of this land here. Very near the brook, there is a lot of erosion that's happening. And so what I was hoping was that a couple of these pieces, if I'd be allowed to leave them there to help shore up some of that soil from pulling down. I'm not looking to actually add any soil. I'm not looking to bring any outside fill-in by any means. I'm just looking to kind of help preserve what's there. But if it can't be there, it can't be there, that I understand. And then just do some light, you know, typical trimming work of some overhanging branches, but no other, like I said, no other tree removal. So that's what I'm terming the first phase of this. Secondarily, as, as Mr. Hinkley mentioned, I'd like to eventually take the lawn that is my, basically my lawn goes right up to about where that tree is. There's some paxandra there. But there's a reasonable slope there, and I'd like to just put a small garden wall in, in my lawn area and put the top part as a paver patio or gravel patio, something along those lines. And then just gent, make the slope a little bit more gentle where the grass is. All the slope goes right towards the brook. None of that actually changes. None of it will, you know, it's, it's all still gonna pitch down. That would be phase two of what I'm looking at. When that's gonna happen, I'm not sure. My hope was to try to do it this year. And the reason that I added it in was, he had mentioned to me, there was a five-year duration on these permits. So if I had an idea of what I wanted to do, try to put as much as I can in here, and this happens to be the original site plan from the house when it was built. So I just tried to use this as best I could, measured it out. I'm not at the point where I can, you know, where I'd be looking to have like a professional site survey or anything like that. So I just tried to, to lay this out as best I can, get accurate measurements for where the tree locations are, where the brook is relative to the property. And this, the, the slope and the runoff of, of the land pretty much goes straight back. You know, including my neighbors' properties, they all just go straight back. That's, that's pretty much.
If I may, I want to back up to the original phase one first, if I may.
Sure.
Have those stumps been ground? Is that as is that showed me in that picture previously? Have those logs been removed and the stump's been ground? What's the state of the site right now?
Okay, this is, we're up here at the top, this is where a lot, this is all still here, because I was, it was mentioned to me to just kind of just stop progress on it until I could get the permit in.
Yeah, the, the stumps are not ground to mine, although I asked him not to do that until he has a discussion with you. And I don't know what he even wants to do at this point.
Yeah, I, I fully intend, I fully intend to leave the stumps as is.
Well, um, if he had mistakenly, if he did grind the stumps, those chips would have to come out, right? Or we could use that as fill? What's the common practice here?
In, in the past, you guys have determined that this type of material has fill. Because as we know, you know, on a hard rain, some of that's probably gonna wash down into the brook and float anyway. So it's really, you know, up to you how you want to treat it. If you want it, if you consider.
The reason I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Okay, but we've had in other applications to stabilize the slope, we do have certain shrubs there that we have put in place. You know, it helps stabilize the slope. Now we've lost those trees, they're gonna deteriorate over time, just gonna rot. Is it better to do some plantings in there, remove the stumps and put some plantings in to help stabilize that slope?
That could certainly be done, yes.
So I would ask the applicant to investigate that to see maybe, okay, maybe we do ground it, take, use as a some sort of fill just to help stabilize the slopes. Now, we don't have that foundation from the roots of the, the trees there. We could put some sort of vegetation to help, even as a buffer between your property and the brook, some lower lying shrubs. That, we have done that in the past, and I suggest maybe you work mistakenly and come up with a recommendation for the commission.
Okay, all right. Yeah, my, like I said, my intent was to just leave them there. I was hoping, honestly, not, not, yeah, for now at least. Well, what I was gonna, what I was gonna ask is, and yeah, I could certainly sidebar this, is to plant some small, you know, typical vegetation for the area in the side. And then as, as the stump naturally degrades, fill in more and plant more, rather than intentionally, you know, grind the stump and everything. But we, I can, I can talk about that on the side, certainly, and come up with a good proposal.
Thank you. At this stage, before we go on to step B, do, do any of the commissioners have a few comments they would like to make? Okay, as Mr. Darren about this portion of it, the tree cutting and the slope portion of it, and then we'll talk about your, your map, your other intentions afterwards.
Commissioner Wagner.
Commissioner Wagner.
I agree with you, Chairman, that we, he should put in some vegetation there, because he removed those trees within the wetland area, and by replacing with some shrubberies, it'll help with the erosion. So I think that should definitely be in the plan there.
Okay. Anyone else?
Commissioner.
Uh, Richard here.
Okay, Commissioner Laverrier first.
Yes, I was just, I, I thought that the comment as to cutting overhang was a little, the overhanging branches, et cetera. I thought that was a little bit vague. Is there, can the applicant maybe be a little more specific with how far back any branch cutting would be, you know, that he's looking to do?
This is just on some trees that are on the sides. There's some low, small, maybe one inch diameter branches that are coming over. You can kind of see it in the left view, there's a couple of branches that come over. Nothing large, just stuff that's kind of just really coming very low and, and into, into the yard. I'm certainly not looking to get like a cherry picker or anything, no equipment to go up high. It's just the, the real low stuff near the ground that would impede the, the lawn area.
So that begs the question, how far off the ground are you referring?
Within 10 feet, I would say. You could actually, actually in this view here, if you look at some of those branches coming out, they're pretty small. They're just nearby. I mean, honestly, I probably could leave them, but I just don't want them to get any bigger. I don't want them to grow any further into the yard, because then they're gonna start touching, honestly, I've seen them before where they start touching the ground and then leaf rot starts to happen. And there starts to be some decay, and that may be how some of these trees are actually getting sick. Because quite a few of these beech trees, and the reason I'm not taking any more of them down is because all of them are facing towards the brook. They fall naturally, I'm, I'm good. But they're all, what you don't see is they're all very tall. They're all at least 50 feet tall. It wouldn't be a good day if they fell the other way. So, like I said, the, the fact that those are more on the slope facing that way than, that I'm not, I'm not as concerned with it. It's just, just small, small trimming of, of those things. That, that's pretty, pretty minor.
Thank you, sir.
I can just remind the commissioners, typically homeowners are allowed to do maintenance of trees, you know, trimming branches, et cetera, on trees, even in a regulated area.
Okay, Commissioner Castasanta, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My main concern is for slope stabilization and restoration of the riparian zone. If we could get maybe some plantings there, right at the banks of the, the brook, it would stabilize the slope and it would improve the water quality acting as buffer zone to screen out any, you know, wood chips, whatever, that might tend to wanna flow into the brook. So that, those are my main concerns right now.
Yep, I understand that, definitely. You know, there's certainly, you know, as you would imagine, I, I see my, I see ducks out there. We have a blue heron that's back there. Yeah, obviously, I want to preserve all of that. So, um, yeah, there's, even before the trees came down, because there is such a large canopy there, that whole area behind it, the reason that there's erosion already is because it's pretty much all dirt. There's a few little vines here and there. There's some Virginia creeper on the sides, but other than that, it's all dirt. So honestly, small, small shrubs or small plantings is gonna be honestly better than what the tree provided. So because the canopy won't be there, there's gonna be a lot of, I, I think there's gonna be a lot of smaller roots holding on that, that all in place much better. So I'm, I'm, absolutely. It's all, it's amazing how much more sun there is back there. But there is still a canopy to protect things that are back, you know, the wildlife that's back there and, and all of that. There's still plenty of stand trees on the side. It's just this one tree in particular was so large. And, and as I mentioned, it was so top-heavy that if, if it came down anywhere, it would have, it would have made the news. So.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Paskowicz, have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you. This is for the applicant. I see a portion of a log there with a cavity in it, and I see more among the, you know, varied sizes that you have there, that the cavity had extended quite high up into the tree. Prior to your cutting these trees, did you notice any black ants around the immediate area?
You know, I didn't look that close, honestly. I could ask my tree guy, because he's the one that noticed it. I noticed openings. So this is the tree that's on the right, the one that was actually more rotted. And he noticed openings in the tree, probably where some branches had fallen, and whether it was ants or something else had gotten in there. Just for your own information, there is a termite history in this area. There was a, a deck on the back of the house that I purchased two years ago. It was removed before I bought it and found that there was some, it, it's inactive, it's been, it's, you know, the, the colony is not there on the house or anything anymore, but there is definitely some activity there. There's also been, you probably don't even see them in these pictures, but other branches that have fallen down over time, and they've been pretty rotted out. And so it's just providing all sorts of food for, whether it's ants or termites or anything. So what caused it, I'm not sure. But it's, it was definitely very prevalent. I, if needed, I can definitely ask my, my arborist.
Well, what I'm alluding to is this, and the question is, I'm not quite sure, are you going to be removing all these, these chips from the site?
Um, that's, that's really gonna be up to the commission, how you guys want to handle it.
Okay, well, I'm gonna hand, I'm gonna handle it right now. I'd like to see them removed. It's in your best interest to have them removed, because if there's been termite infestation in the area, it's a perfect habitat for them to approach on.
Yeah, absolutely.
If there were carpenter ants there, or they're still around, because they hide very well. Haven't been a tree warden for a number of years and observed damage of trees. And you know, I felt your concern of taking it into your hands and cutting those trees for your safety was a good margin of safety to do. You had no idea whether it would be in, within a wetland encroachment. And I understand that fully. So I would highly recommend they be removed due to possible termite infestation habitat and possible carpenter ant habitat due to the cavities that I see in the trees. Um, also, it, when people mulch today, including myself, it's always best to buy or purchase treated chips.
Yep.
Because of the concerns in our area. There are a lot of different types of insects that can start living there and it's very hard and difficult to remove them after the fact. And we don't wanna treat with chemicals that close to a water course. So that can eliminate pesticides So that's a recommendation.
Thank, oh, that's, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Paskevich. Uh, is there anyone else?
Just wanted to point out. Yeah, so if we could go back a cup, one of the pictures. Yeah, that one there, no. Yes, that one there. So, this is a good time to, to observe this, this is not all brook, I'm assuming, this is the flooded overflowing of the brook, correct? The brook is further out?
Yeah, so, this, this, um, picture was taken before basically those branches with the leaves on them, that's kind of right in the center of the picture. Um, that's in the brook. Now, the brook itself in the summertime, of course, not this year, but normally is pretty small. Um, yes, it's in kind of like the mud flats on the side of it. All the large lumber is on the side of the brook.
Yeah, so that, that's what I'm getting at. I could see the embankment, the, that would be the other side of the brook. So this side that's on your side, that's flood storage capacity area, so we definitely don't want anything in there, uh, and
Right.
that's just common sense, but, um, you know, and I know the temptation when, when, and everyone does it, when you live on the side of an embankment, unfortunately, there's usually is a water course down there and people tend to put their yard waste in there, so.
Oh, absolutely not, yeah.
It's natural, I'm not, I'm not pointing out, I'm not just pointing out this to you, I mean, it's an, it's a natural tendency of anyone, so, um, it's just so too convenient, so. Uh, but that is flood storage capacity, so we don't wanna have anything in there and any future application for filling wouldn't involve that, you know, beyond that slope, I would, you know.
Yeah, and, and.
No one would ever approve that, of course, so.
And, and just so you're, you're aware, commissioners, I did have his contract to remove the, those pile of branches that you see in that flood staged area. All that stuff has been removed out, the, the logs, they are still there out of the flood stage area, but it's storage area, but they are on the embankment down there, but the rest of that stuff did get removed.
Yeah, you, most likely, we want those logs out of there too, of course, and the stumps on, I have, you know, either way, I could go on that. I think they would stabilize the embankment for quite a few years if they were left there and let the other stuff establish itself, but if, if the consensus was to remove them, I would have no problem with that either, so. I just wanted to point that out and, um, yeah, so, I guess.
Yep.
That's about it.
No, thank you. And, and just. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, can we proceed? Is Mr. Darren, pause?
Oh, yes, sorry, I apologize. Um, just wanted to mention regarding the flood storage area with that large set of storms that came in, uh, the other week. Um, just so you get an idea of how high the brook was during that, which is probably the highest I've ever seen it. Um, it, the highest it got was maybe to that first group of smaller logs, the, the group that's nearest the brook, so the, whatever the flood storage is, while I'm certainly gonna pull these out, um, it didn't, there was no risk, not a single log went down, nothing got pushed or carried or anything like that. So, there is no, uh, there's no debris that made its way down even in, even in that storm, so that's good news for all of this. But yes, absolutely, my plan is to pull this stuff out.
Okay, any other commissioners wishing to comment at this time, uh, these, on this phase, uh, at this time of this project? I don't see anyone's hand up. Okay, um, so if you wanna go ahead and move on, this is for future state, uh, you can give a brief presentation, but I think, Mr. Hankley, the application that will come in next month will be just for the, this, uh, embankment remediation.
The application for you now, I, I think you, you're gonna treat it as the tree cutting and the bank stabilization, that's my, that's my feeling, that's really up to you. So, tonight, the only action you need to take is to decide whether this requires a public hearing. If not, then it's just gonna be on the agenda next month and you can see what progress he's made in that time, see what plan he's come up with for plantings, et cetera, and then you can have that discussion next week. And, and I honestly think I had a brief discussion with Mr. Darren earlier in the week about this and, and I think he was kind of on board with this as well, get this thing approved first and then going forward, you know, we can modify this permit and my guess is you'd probably want a condition on there that you're not gonna allow any modifications until all this stuff has been taken care of as well. So, that gives him incentive to take care of what he needs to do and you guys are protected as well. But again, that's gonna be, um, your decision, so if you wanna hear him discuss his future activities, that's up to you, if you'd rather just concentrate on, um, what's before you tonight.
So this, 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 right in front of us, those are the three trees that came out, the three trees that have been cut that are outlined on this, on the sketch, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Correct. Um, and briefly go through your next slide, just talk us through, um, you have two sketches, I believe, here. Three sketches.
Yep. So this, yes, this would be, uh, this would be what I would aft, only after everything in phase one is done, because of course, certainly with the, the chips and everything, that has to get removed anyway. Um, so with the slope that's in the backyard now, what I would like to do, because there used to be a deck there, I, and because of the termite history, I thought it was a smarter move to go eventually and go to a paver patio so that there's not, there's no incentive to bring, you know, ants or termites or anything back there. Um, and, but because of, you know, the, the proper slope for a paver patio and how the rest of the slope of the yard is, I was gonna put a small, um, certainly no higher than two feet. I haven't seriously explored this yet, I haven't talked to a landscaping company yet, so this is just very preliminary. Um, but certainly no more than a two-foot, uh, basically garden wall um, between the patio and the remaining portion of the yard. And what that, and then, so B is the area where the patio will be. Um, C is going, is going to be slightly lowered, basically there's still gonna be a slope to it, of course, still bringing rain, bringing, uh, groundwater in the same direction, um, but just basically, uh, make it a more mild slope. And then, so where, where the pachysandra is and you can kind of see where the location of the tree is, that's pretty much where the pachysandra ends now. I was just going to kind of, you know, plant, you know, fill in, because a lot of it is kind of dirt, weed, grass, pachysandra mixture. I was just kind of, kind of even, even out that border, but the amount of woods that is there i- is gonna stay. I'm not gonna, I'm not looking to change anything beyond that.
And I did have a discussion w- with the applicant as well about, this is probably something that with a little, uh, patio and a little landscaping knee wall that your, the commission is probably gonna wanna see some kind of updated survey, at least some limited topographic information in the back there just to get an idea of the grade, et cetera. So he is aware of that, um, as well. But, you know, the, again, that's, that's gonna be up to you guys.
Please continue, Mr. Darren. If there's anything else.
That's pretty much it, to be honest, of, of this phase, so, this is, this I would like to have happen, like I said, hopefully within the next year, just to give an idea of the timeframe.
All right. Um, any other comments from commissioners before we, uh, need to vote on the need for a public hearing, I'm just gonna open up to everyone, does anyone have any more questions, Mr. Darren? Commissioner Wagner?
How much, uh, fill would you bring in to, on C, the, how big is the slope now versus what you would do?
My hope, a- and, and I wish I could answer this definitively, but again, I'd need to talk to a landscaper. My hope is that by creating that knee wall there, the soil that would be removed to the left side, nearest the wall, would be added to the right side, so there'd be little to no fill being brought in. My goal was to try to preserve without having to bring additional fill in. Um, that being said, um, one thing I do wanna mention to the commission is that around the house, um, the grading, the, the proper grading for drainage away from the house is a little low, it's, it's eroded away over time. Um, probably about three inches below where it should be, if I had to guess. Um, so at some point, I do need to fix that because right now, water pools up around the house. Eventually, it does go back towards the brook, but I wanna prevent, you know, any damage to my foundation.
I think he's looking, trying to obviously, uh, a balanced cut and fill. I think, I think he has enough grade there to, you know, use material onsite to do what he needs to do.
But that's not what we're discussing.
New fill.
But, am I correct? Am I correct that that's not what we're discussing right now, that that would be a future?
Correct, I think, yeah, this is just as, yes.
informative reference information at this time.
Okay, yes.
All right, if there's no further comments from commissioners on this phase of the project, I think, as Mr. Hankley mentioned earlier, we have to decide if this application warrants a public hearing. Um, my personally, I, I would say not, I think communication between uh, the applicant and the commission, I think, is sufficient. Uh, what are the comments of the rest of the commission regards to that? Would anybody insist on having a public hearing for this application? Please speak up now.
Commissioner Bishan, I agree with you. I agree with you, Chairman.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Bishan. So, to that effect, um, Mr. Secretary, I'd like to have a motion regarding application twenty twenty-one dash eighteen for cutting and filling activities within the Upland Review Area at seventy-two Wells Drive North, Newton, Connecticut. Owner and applicant is Jason Durham. May I have a motion, sir?
Well, this one does say filling, though.
Right, because he filled, so if you're gonna want him to remove it, that's fine, he's gonna remove it.
This is only for the public hearing. You think a public hearing is.
I'm sorry.
We're gonna review this again next, he's gonna, it's gonna come in with a proposal next month the form, and that's what we're gonna vote on and that's when we're gonna discuss the details, and he's gonna work with Mr. Hankley to, uh, come up with a planting or stump removal, remove chips, so on and so forth. We're not voting on that right now. It's a possibility of that happening, but right now, this motion is relative to the necessity of a public hearing. Secretary LeVarier may have a motion.
Maybe someone else is available to read the motion?
Mr. Wagner, Commissioner Wagner, do you have the motion? Friend of you, option two. You're unmute, sir.
All right, motion and option one, the commission.
Sorry, I was on mute, sorry, my bad.
Right.
Okay.
You can read it then, motion.
Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, this is the, this is the Zoom here, okay. Yeah, the commission believes this activity will have no significant impact to the regulated area and or they will not be in the best interest of the public, therefore, this application will not require a public hearing.
Thank you, sir, may I have your second?
Second, Commissioner Paskevich.
Second, I make Commissioner Paskevich, final discussion. Ms. Gibbons, please call the roll.
Sorry, I was muted.
Yeah, me too.
Commissioner Ancona?
Yes.
Commissioner Bishan?
Uh, yes, to know, yeah.
Commissioner Castasanta?
Aye.
Commissioner LeVarier?
Yes, to know.
Commissioner, uh, Paskevich?
No public hearing.
Chairman Sadeel?
Yes, to the motion.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, to the motion.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. Mr. Darren, we'll see you next month with your recommendation and formal proposal.
Thank you very much, everybody, have a good evening.
Night. You too, sir.
Okay, moving on to item six, public participation and non agenda items. Do we have anyone on the line, Mr. Kupitski?
We do have one, well, we had one individual and they have left us, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right, then we shall proceed with item seven, communication reports, agent communications. I think, uh, Ms. Bertotti is on the line to discuss some changes to the regulate, recent, uh, recent changes to the regulations.
I am, good evening, everybody on the commission. Um, James, in my, in my PowerPoint that I sent over to you, can you see the certain sections that are highlighted? James?
I'm just looking, uh, yes, it looks like on page two, you have some highlights, three, page four.
All right, do me a favor, I was going to share my screen, but I can't highlight for whatever reason, so let's use the one that I sent to you, if you don't mind showing this, I would appreciate it, thank you so much. So, uh, to you, the Conservation Commission members, the reason why I decided to come and give you this update tonight is in all the years that I worked as a planner, which is quite, quite a few, I always kept a very close eye on all of the new laws that would come in like normally every summer. And in all of these years, I have never seen a year like this. There is such numerous voluminous amount of laws that ended up getting changed this year that, um, you know, we, the planners have hard time just kind of keeping up with all of this. And I think everybody needs to get educated and, and in, at least informed as to what is happening. So, I picked few things out of all this that I think are relevant to you as a conservation commission, and then there are some other ones that, you know, if you have questions, I'm here to answer. So to start off, one of the first things that I will be talking to you about is this, um, expiration time for land use permits that is changed under this, this new law. Um, one of the things that is affecting the wetland statutes is this section, um, two, subsection D of the twenty-two A, forty-two A, that essentially sets an effective date on any permit that you issue as to coincide with other land use permits. So, for example, if somebody needs an approval of the site line or a subdivision approval, and in order to get that approval, they have to come to you and get the wetlands approval. The wetlands approval's effective date will be essentially once that subdivision or site line is approved by the planning commission. So that, um, the intent of this, I believe, was so that there is one date for people to worry about, to kind of like streamline this process. And, um, it, you know, it's fine for us, the, the, one of the questions that came up, and one of the questions that I also have is since that's the case, you know, you can approve the wetlands permit and it doesn't become effective and it may not become effective in next five, ten years while somebody is preparing to file a land use application and during which time perhaps things could change. Um, the conditions could change and that would definitely affect what's happening. Do you hear this noise in my house?
Yeah, it sounds like a toilet.
Oh my God, it's my dishwasher, guys, can you hold on just a second, let me shut that thing off?
Just so we know, tonight, um, our council liaisons are not attending tonight, Gail, uh.
I really apologize for that. I just started the dishwasher before, before I came on.
I think she used it when it was like that, I don't know.
Can we look at the second slide, please?
Can, can we just go back to that one point that you had, because I, I share your concern, uh, so they don't have to have a simultaneous, uh, application before the planning board, if we approve it, uh, if wetlands approves it, like you said, it could be a decade down the road before they even revisit it?
It could.
Yeah, so I share.
I mean, it is, it, it is, the intent of the law, I believe, was not for that, it's a question that is posed right now and I think I think what's, what is going to happen, all of these new regulations, that all of these new amendments to statutes that happened come in with number of questions that everybody has, so we will see what ends up happening. Some of it will be resolved through the court system, so, you know, hopefully.
Probably, the, the intent was probably just so that their wetland permit didn't expire before their.
Exactly, that, that's how I understand it, the intent was to align the wetlands permit together with all the other. The intent was to align the wetlands permit together with all the other permits. So that somebody doesn't have something that expires three months before something else and four months before some like.
Right, a, a common expiration date for, for their entire project, yes.
Okay.
James, can you move on to next one, please? So then, um, the other thing that, um, is off of matter here is that, so, so to start off, just to understand the current situation. The site plan approval lapses after five years. The wetlands approval are good for the way that's written from like anytime set by the commission to ten years. Oh, man, this is not going well, this presentation.
Take your time.
Yes.
So anyways, in two thousand eleven, in response to the, you know, economic crisis that we had, starting in two thousand seven, eight, when we had that real estate crash. The statutes were amended to include certain approvals. Um, things that were approved within the certain dates. And the time for site plan was extended from five years to nine years. Plus normal five years extension. And same thing was applicable to the wetlands approval and special exception and the whole, the subdivision as well. So what they're doing now is similar to that, except that we're piling on dates like crazy. So there is a statute currently that says for any approval, any site plan approved after certain date in eighty four, you get five years. So whatever is approved today is valid for five years. However, whatever is approved two months ago will actually have a duration of up to nineteen years. And this applies to wetlands permit, as you can see in this one, because this is twenty two A forty two A is wetland statutes. And then can you move on to next slide, James?
Slow down, so does this mean, excuse me, we have to revise our regs? Because the state controls these states, right, we follow this, the DEP. Does that mean we're gonna have to revise our regulations if this passed, if it already hasn't, or?
No, no, so you don't have to change your regulations. And in particular, they haven't changed what you approved today under your regulation is still the same as it was ten years ago or fifteen months ago. However, what you approved fifteen months ago, automatically by the change of the statutes gets another nine years. So we're talking about, you know, from eighty four on, we're talking about what was extended to nine years to now being extended to fourteen years plus five years to add once somebody seeks extension. And this is specific for these dates, so whatever is approved on or after July one of two thousand eleven, which is when that nine year extension came in and end, ending on March ten, twenty twenty. So this is like a COVID related kind of, you know, whatever was approved then and then wasn't able to get built.
Okay, so this is a special exception for those permits that were valid during that time period only.
Correct, so this is just during that time period. So we still have our normal times for the stuff that we are approving now. But this, as a conservation commission, somebody will ask you, how is it that, you know, now I have five year and I extended it five years plus seven days? And this other guy got this approval and it's like good for almost twenty years. So the reason why I'm talking to you about this is to just kind of understand where certain periods of time and how this is happening. Because you will probably at some point be asked about something like this.
Yes, and Commissioner Sadeel, um, if DEP publishes legislative updates, we will have to update the regs. So if they update the model regs, we will at some point go through that.
All right, so go to the next one, James. So like I said, this applies, you know, started with wetland statues, then moved on the site plan. As you can see, this is a subdivision part, so it applies to all the subdivisions. And then the next one, James, will probably be special permit. So just a summary, and I, and I summarize this on a special permits, because that's what I'm also going to have to talk to the planning commission about. Is for all unexpired that were granted prior to this date and that not, that not, had not ended by um, March of twenty twenty. These permits are now extended so that they can be valid for like nineteen year period. And, um, it applies to pretty much everything in land use that we do. Going forward, everything's the same, going backwards, they got an extension. Can you move on to the next one, or the James? So this talks about large subdivisions. This really doesn't pertain to us, we don't have subdivisions of four hundred dwelling units and we don't have land for that. So let's move on to the next one, please. Um, this kind of talks about some of the intents behind this. The effect is so that everything is kind of combined, fourteen years minimum, nineteen years if extended. Um, the local boards and agencies can still approve extensions. And extensions are still kept as to like five plus five. So go to the next one, please. Um, so the other things that I thought were relevant to you is these statutes now um, included some language for incentives, municipal incentives and incentives to developers for the certain energy conservation tools. And they included things that weren't in the statutes before, like solar and other renewable forms of energy were in the subdivision stuff, but not in the site plan kind of discussion stuff. They're also now adding this combined heat and power, water conversation, um, conservation and other, other things. Um, so when, when I, when we look at this stuff, you know, what we should really start thinking about is how do we implement this? And the, you know, the way to implement it is to participate in the changes in the zoning regulations. Like you don't necessarily want to regulate these conservation elements through your wetlands regs. So as a conservation commission, at one point, we can sit down and talk about what would we like to talk to the planning, to TPZ and see if we can comment on the changes that, you know, I will be writing for the zoning regulations to include these things that are enabled and kind of, how do I say this, encouraged to be in the municipal zoning regulations by the statutes, by the enabling legislature. Can you move on to next one, please? Um, some of the things that are kind of interesting in these, you know, zoning statutes are, for example, they explicitly excluded language that pertains to overcrowding of land and avoiding of undue concentration of population. So this was one of these matters that planning commission had to consider. It was in enabling statute as something that they had to like think about every time they changed regulations. So now the legislature excluded that language. They didn't say you can consider, but they are not requiring them to consider it anymore. They are also including language that says protect the state's historic tribal, cultural and environmental resources. So the commission in writing of their regulations now is actually required to do this, this, this part, to protect the state um, environmental resources. Bunch of the language in the statutes was geared about, first of all, fixing this enabling statute with, which was quite a mess to begin with. But the secondary or perhaps the primary objective of it was to address issues with housing in the state. So they included a lot of language in the state talking about how you cannot discriminate in your regulation against, you know, multifamily housing and densities and stuff like that. So as you're making again, your conservation commission decision, this is something that we all kind of need to also have in the back of our mind. Like the state gives municipalities right to do something. When they do that, they have like these certain objectives. So, um, you know, part of what we also have to always kind of keep thinking about is, you know, a multifamily building that occupies environmentally less space and is designed to preserve some kind of energy perhaps is better than three little homes. All right, let's move on to the next one, please.
Commissioner Paschke, here, could I address Renata, please?
Mm-hmm.
Um, could you? You, you said quite a bit here, could you concise what you're alluding to, why you have this highlighted? Are we looking to change it, leave it alone, adhere it? Just give me a concise statement on it.
The reason why I am telling this, why I'm presenting this to, to your commission tonight is because this is a change in enabling statutes that requires planning through regulations to consider things that your commission cares about strongly. The commission will change regulations. They will change the regulations because, you know, some elements of them do not meet this new law. They will change them because some elements of them just need to be changed. In this change, what you as a conservation commission could do is keep these elements in mind and then comment on their proposed changes.
Okay, comment to whom?
Town Planning and Zoning Commission, when they're changing their zoning commission. That is your implementation tool.
Well, how would we go about commenting? This, this is a statute, correct?
This is a statute, yes.
Okay, so how would we go about commenting a statute to the Planning and Zoning Commission? I mean.
So, so for example, what normally happens is I come up or together with the planning commission, we come up with the standards for site plan development. And what we require for the site plan development standards, right? Those regulations are put out for public comment, including the town boards and commissions comment. So that's how you would comment during the public hearing.
Okay, so going back to this PA twenty one twenty nine where you have it highlighted. Is this something you wanna change, you wanna address it? I'm not quite sure where you're going with this.
We have to implement it.
No, we don't have to do anything.
Yeah, we know.
Let me, I'm speaking to Renata, I'm not speaking to you. I have more to per. So let's go back to our discussion, please, Renata.
So what, what, what I want you to do is first of all, know that this has changed. Second of all, when I come up with the regulation proposal to the planning commission, and by the way, there are elements of the enabling statutes that address all kinds of things. You know, economic development, um, housing, like I said, you know, all sorts of different things. There are all these competing and complementing elements to the development. One of which is environmental protection. So once we change the regulation in which we talk about development standards for something, you as a commission, as well as a private citizen, will or should know that. And that's what I am encouraging you guys to do, to comment on those documents once they're prepared.
This is just like when TPZ comments when we change our regulations. They look at it, if, if they feel, you know, they give a feedback, you give feedback to them. They can choose to do or not do, but.
So does that help?
Well, it, it's, it's a start, but I'm not completely, um, I guess the best thing to do, our thinking of is, uh, you're going to draft a change to the regulations?
No, not, not like, not right now and not to any extent that talks about this. But eventually, every regulation change should be reviewed by the conservation commission if it includes any kind of development standard. And when you review anything that I propose, for example, you know, one of the things that I'm considering doing is proposing a change to the business district. That will talk about like which uses are allowed here. When you look at that, if you think that somehow that is going to be too imposing on environment, you should, you should comment on that. Nothing is coming up immediately, this is an educational section that is just for me to tell you these laws changed. And we may be changing laws municipally, locally at some point, and when we do, this is kind of stuff that I think pertains to your commission and you should look at it and think about.
Commissioner Casa Santa has his hand up.
I, I haven't finished quite yet.
Okay, sorry. All right, sorry, give us the pass switch.
Um, have you been meeting with other planners on your, on your board meetings to discuss this overall? As a purview to work towards?
Uh, no. I, I'm, I'm not quite sure if I understand what, what you mean by that.
When you get together with your council planners,
Mm-hmm.
Have you, this, has this been a discussion in their meetings?
These, these new statutes?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes, we're all struggling and having like fifty million questions about like language and, yes.
Okay, so is there a consensus to work on what I see here in front of me? In your, with your planner?
Because now, you know, it doesn't, the consensus doesn't matter, this is now a law. There is no need for consensus.
Okay, but do you want to change something or, I mean, I don't understand.
No, I'm not changing anything right now, I'm telling.
Why are we discussing something we're not gonna change?
Because you should know what is the current law. When it comes to land.
You're educating us, you're not telling us to change anything.
Correct, correct.
All right, now I understand, because it, I'm getting this feeling from what you're saying that you want us to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for
No.
some kind of change.
No, 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 no.
Educational.
No, this is, this is really educational. This is for you to know if you're, if somebody on, in the town asks you a question. I want you as a conservation commission members to just be up to date with these new changes. This is new, it just happened, a lot of people are talking about it, and I'm worried that somebody will be asked and shrugging their so, shoulders.
Okay, now I understand a hundred percent much better, because I.
Thank you, I, I apologize if I lied you on the wrong question.
No, you didn't lead me, I just couldn't put it together in, in a concise manner, thank you.
Commissioner Casa Santa, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm wavering whether to make the comment or not. I mean, all I was gonna say is for, for what we do here officially on this commission, our hands are kind of tied by the state statutes. So we don't have a lot of leverage. We have to look at a application, see how the state statutes on wetlands apply to that application and make a ruling on whether we will approve that application or not. The other stuff sounds more like something zoning and the other land use, oh, zoning is the only other land use commission other than us, so what zoning, uh, would want to do, I understand where uh, Renata's coming from and it's good education. But when, when I'm looking at what we're doing here, uh, I think if we go too far afield of looking exactly what the regulations say and apply those regulations
and apply those regulations to the application, we could open ourselves up for trouble down the line if we start saying, well, maybe we should take these other factors into consideration. No, we really have to stick to the wetlands regulations when we're approving applications. That was the point I wanted to make.
That is one hundred percent accurate. What we're talking about are policy changes, not action, not application, acting on an application. So anything that I will be talking to you tonight comes from like enabling statutes and it has really no connection with day-to-day making a decision on a specific application.
And that was my concern that maybe newer commissioners might not understand that. Might think that we have a more uh, a position of more advocacy than we possibly um, might consider ourselves normally to have. Because we can get ourselves in the town in a lot of trouble if we go too far afield of what the state regs are on wetlands. So that was my main concern. So just as a clarification for the board, and I find this whole discussion very informative and I appreciate the update. Because anytime there's updates to the law, we really need to be um, up to date on it. So I'm appreciating it, but I just wanna make sure that as a commission, we remain focused on what we're doing here, which is applying the wetlands regulations to these applications.
Um, point of order, uh, I think Miss Conway has has excused herself from the meeting. Um, it's a future reference, if you need to excuse yourself, please note that for the record. Um, you have plans, I understand, but normally if you need to excuse yourself, you you highlighted to me and you'll be excused, so we know in the minutes uh, that you were not there for a certain amount of testimony. Uh, just for the future record, I'll maybe I'll talk to her privately about this, just a point of order uh for the commissioners. Okay, please proceed.
I just received that notification by email as well, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, what time was that, by the way?
I received it at eight twenty-nine and I did inform the secretary of it by text.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, please, thank you, please continue.
Alright, so can you move on to the next slide, please? Then, and there are some other things, again, policy stuff. What, and and again, correctly, this applies to zoning. But as a conservation commission, like I would imagine that this is kind of stuff that you are interested in. So with some of the reviews, we are now allowed to look at things other than certain elements, like we were supposed to look at traffic on the level of service area. We're now talking about vehicle mile travels, which has to do with air pollution. And then the other part also is this number of parkings that, you know, we can't by regulations require more parking than certain number for certain developments that is set now in the statutes. There is some opt-out provisions. Perhaps at some point, the town will decide to go that route. And if we do, that is one of the things I will ask for you to comment on. Can you move on to the next slide, please? And then the next one. So another thing that's interesting is, and this right now does not apply to the Wetlands Commission. There is a requirement, there is now a requirement for commissioners training. And it is, you know, four hours, four hours of training for all of the zoning commission members. This is very likely to roll down and transfer over to the Wetlands and Conservation Committees as well. This is something where I think they forgot to include all of the land use-making agencies. And that's why the Wetlands Commission stayed out. Otherwise, everywhere that I know, and all this time, the Wetlands Commission is generally required and we're offered more training than even the zoning commission is there. So this is something that I think probably will get changed next year to include Wetlands Commissioners as well. Can you move on to the next slide?
I like to address that. Yes, um, prior to your coming on board of Town of Newington and also a number of our commissioners that are new on board, um, the persons that were with me, which were a number did take training and it's been documented. Uh, I know Eric Henkley has it i- in his documents, don't you, Eric?
Uh, yeah, we we have a commissioner training.
Alright, could you, could you please uh pull that out at some point and show that to Renata? So that she knows that some of us already have had training and the hours and where we took that training through D E P. And we have certification to those hours. I just want you to pass it on to her, please.
I I know that.
Okay, well.
I am aware of the training that's required for Wetlands Commissioners, that's why I said.
The new commissioners have not taken any training and I don't know if it's been addressed to the new commissioners. But as you, as you're bringing it up now, I think we should speak to that, uh, Chairman, uh, Sidil. Maybe you could uh take charge of that at the next meeting and speak about for the training to the new commissioners, because I know you also had taken training.
Right, is that Central Connecticut, yes.
That is exactly why I thought that training that's required off of the Wetlands Commissioners was not required of any other board, which is why I'm pretty certain that, you know, they, that the state always required in Wetlands Commission to get a higher level of trainings than the other communities. And and they kept in Wetlands out of this, which I think is probably an oversight, somebody missed it. Because I, it must matter to state quite a bit, so that's probably going to be added as well.
Uh, my concern is that who's gonna fund the training? Like with Central, we picked two seats, Mr. Henkley would pick two people to go take it and that training would pay for by the town's budget. Is the state gonna fund? So we have, sometimes we have big turnover, sometimes we don't, but who's gonna pay that tuition for that fee that that's not free? Uh, how's that gonna work into the mix here as far as the uh, uh, who's gonna pay for the actual training?
Lots of questions, lots of questions about that as well. And I'll tell you, a lot of these things, including the fact that right now, to do this properly, a town should hire actually a legal counsel to review new statutes and compare them to our regulations and ensure that everything is compliant. Like that's what ideally should be done. And who has money for that? So we're we're going to do that in-house as we can. But bunch of this stuff that rolled up through these new laws is an unfunded mandate to us, including, you know, who's gonna pay for training? They're talking about CASIO and C C M and C C A P A and, you know, they're going to organize somehow and do that. But ultimately, who will end up paying for that? I don't know. Even if it's not straight out paid by the municipality, I bet it will be through membership dues to these agencies that, you know, will somehow end up having to pay for it. Um, can you move on to the next slide, please?
I don't think I want to.
Please do, please do. Oh, yes. So I'm getting off of hot seat and now I'm going to give you James to tell you about meetings.
And I know Eric wants to hear this for the third time.
You know, this stuff, I I am sorry if I'm like boring somebody out with all this, but it it's really important to kind of like know, know these things as as unexciting as they are.
I'll get to hear it for Z B A too, right, James?
You, are we gonna hold a meeting?
On the fifth, on August, yes.
Darn you. Alright, so we have been working with I T and our vendor to try and get you guys back in person. In addition to being back in person, we have a couple of new little hoops to jump through, thanks to the state and the governor. So he attempted to codify most of his executive orders into specifics of how we would go about holding meetings. Our first point is what we are pretty much doing right now. In this case, we're holding our meeting completely virtual. My suggestion to you as a commission, one, it takes a lot of pressure off town staff, and two, it doesn't cause a problem if we run out of uh any technology and get knocked off meetings and which has happened in our T P Z meetings, is to request that you at least have a quorum of members in the room when you're meeting. If the system was to shut down and your quorum was mostly online, we'd have to wait up to a half an hour before we could restart your meeting. And then if you couldn't get those people back online to create your quorum, you have up to two hours to try to, then you would have to adjourn your meeting. So one of those suggestions I'm requesting is if anybody is not able to show up in person, please make sure your contact staff, let them know ahead of time. That way we can be a little bit more prepared for it. Going forward from that, what I'm showing right now are just the basic requirements and staff has heard this a few times, so I'm not gonna go through it too, too much in depth. There's now new requirements of a notice as well as a agenda posting. Uh, the notice is within forty-eight hours, the posting of the agenda is within twenty-four hours. So the notice for us will be a new piece, which will be working out a uh uniform process across all the boards and commissions, so don't panic about that. You guys won't have to worry so much. But you may see more notifications come out to you from the town website. Just be aware of that. Page two. Oh, there we go. So again, our posting requirements, the twenty-four hour posting requirements, this one is not really that bad. So right now, this is what we are under, which is solely by electronic means we're holding our meeting. And this is where we have a few extra hoops that we have to jump through. So if we get within twenty-four hours of a meeting, a request from a resident and you you don't have a quorum, you don't have a place that you're meeting in person, we have to provide a location and technology for a resident to be able to join your meeting. And if allowed in your meetings, participate in that meeting during public participation. Could be us setting up a room with a computer, uh, tablet, any number of items. Something we don't wanna have to do right now, especially with the new variants coming out under COVID. And we're not even sure where we're gonna go with meetings right now. The town manager has actually discussed the possibility of going back to all virtual. So some of this may not be applicable in a month or so, but for right now, we have to deal with this. So this is where we get into um the requirements of participating in person versus virtual. Um, the recording secretary is going to have some extra pieces that she's going to have to deal with, which are um, indicating how you are attending the meeting as well. So if five of you are in the room and two of you are virtual, the minutes will now indicate attended virtually. So that's a new change to us. Another piece that you um didn't have to worry about tonight, cause you actually did a roll call vote, is the fact that if you have a vote and you know it's gonna be unanimous, you can do it as voice. If you have somebody who dissents in that vote, you would need to then at that point roll over to a roll call vote. So a couple of little extra pieces that come into play for you, Mr. Chairman, as well as for the recording secretary. But for the most part, we've all gotten used to doing a roll call vote on Zoom. So in that piece, it's not gonna be uh something that's very new for us. Um, this was that clause regarding loss of a pe- uh person's equipment, being not able to attend a meeting. Um, this is why, number four, I'm asking, at least we have a quorum in place. I did have this happen once and it was at the T P Z meeting and it was in the middle of a thunderstorm. I think we went in and out eight times. So we don't wanna have to go through that process if we don't have to. Special meetings, you guys don't tend to do them too much, but most of the same requirements are there. Where you've got a twenty-four hour notice and agenda posting in that aspect, because they're not considered regular at that point. So as soon as we can notify within that uh earlier than twenty-four hour period, we'd be fine. As I indicated, roll call votes for any um meetings where anybody is virtual would be done that way. Same thing you would do if you were in person and decided you wanted a roll call vote just to confirm the vote or if you couldn't determine unanimous consent. And then, as we indicated, minutes for the meeting and how they're attending that meeting. So participation opportunities for the public as well as um a process that you are very good at as a commission, which is identifying oneself before speaking. There are some boards that don't tend to do that and the chairman a lot of times does not recognize them individually as well. So sometimes that can be a loss for the public. We just need to make our best effort to make sure that we're indicating our names ahead of time before speaking. Public may not know who you are. The small window that you show up in on Zoom and on our YouTube page and when it's transmitted through the N C T V site as well, doesn't indicate who you are when you're speaking. So you wanna make sure that you're indicating that ahead of time, making it easier for the public to understand. This is that interruption process, which is a lot of extra work. Because it requires us, once something happens, to, if possible, notify the public, which most of us as staff members don't have direct access to our website, which is where we would publish that we're having an issue, when we think it's going to be um corrected and when we believe the meeting will begin again. That can be in a very difficult process, especially if, say, the person who's running the meeting happens to get kicked off due to technology. So there are a couple of pieces that we are trying to still work out. And this primer right here was created by F L I. Uh, but we are still waiting for a direct confirmation from them on all the processes, just to make sure that we are meeting them. Our hope is to have you back in person, meeting in the council chambers for your meeting in August. With that caveat in place, um, we do have some technology issues that are being installed in there and we hope that will happen. Otherwise, we'll hopefully be able to see you in September. Um, and that is pretty much the end of my presentation, I believe. Let me just see. Yes, and that is, like I said, this is the only other one that really ties in is if somebody is on and is disorderly. We don't tend to have this as much of a problem, because we don't allow our attendees to just jump into our meetings. We allow them in individually and we have control over how they speak and we don't allow them to show their cameras. So very rarely, if any, will we run into this issue, and I hope that we don't. Uh, does anybody have any questions?
Real quick, is this statute gonna be part of the minutes as an attachment?
I can include it or we can send it out to every commissioner, so you have it as information.
Thank you.
No problem.
Uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bishant.
Uh, James says, are those meetings when they're open for us, are they gonna be open to the public?
They will be open for the public and the reason for that is to alleviate the necessity for us to create a location for the public to be able to view or attend your meeting electronically. So if the room is available for you, it is available for the public, they have the opportunity to attend. And in that aspect, the staff does not have to make that additional um technology um available.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That is the reason I asked for the quorum being in there as well, cause we all know technology will fail at some point.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Kapitsky.
My pleasure. I will give you back your last slide, Renata.
So this is James, right? So thi- this is resources, there are summaries of, you know, some of the things that I went over, but in addition to that, if you are interested, there is like this new cannabis law. There are new requirements for outdoor dining, there is new laws about um the accessory dwelling units. All of that is available on these websites. And that concludes my my part, I believe.
That is the last slide for your presentation.
Okay.
So, thank you, Renata. Like a comment to Renata? Yep, um, so the part, you talked about it being policy, but T P Z is, these are more geared, and you said it already, towards T P Z. And eventually, T P Z is gonna have to start uh rolling them into their uh in into their regulations or at least into their decision-making, correct?
Yes, we will start reviewing this and talking to the planning commission. I mean, we already kind of started a little bit. We will look into whether or not we opt out of some of the provisions that were put in the new law. And uh, you know, all these other requirements. And uh, you know, all these other requirements, the general statutes when effective. Another part that is really giving me a headache with this is that a number of these sections become effective at different dates. So once the general statutes statute is effective in relation to something, it trumps local municipal regulations. So each decision that we make, we will have to look at our regs, then look at this law, then determine where we are with that and then say, you know, we have to do this this way, even though our regulations don't treat it that way, or we go to the commission and fix it. It's it's not something I'm particularly happy or excited about.
Well, ju- just to the point, I mean, one of the slides actually said in parentheses, uh, the regulation shall be, I don't know if it said implemented or included or whatever. So it wasn't like it's an option. It's it's, these are statutes, like you said. And the perfect, perfect example of this policy, the policy is clear, we're we're promoting higher density and higher yields in housing. And 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 the high profile case that's been, there's been a few of them where towns have tried to use that clause of uh, you know, uh, it goes against the character. You know, you can't use that term, character of the community anymore. That's just out. That that has no, that has no grounds anymore in uh in decision making. So there's a, there was a few cases locally in Connecticut that made the newspaper or made the news on that, so.
That's not actually accurate. Uh, the character was defined. You, the, there, we're still allowed to consider character, but the character is defined as site characteristic and building characteristics. So you can look at, you know, what that site can accommodate and what will that building be like. But you can't discriminate and um use that. Some towns has apparently used that in past to discriminate against certain kind of developments.
Well, that was the argument that was made, but I mean, the town probably did it in good faith, thinking that they're retaining their character of the the character of their town, you know.
I'm sure, yes.
And I think it was a physical thing, not a demographic thing, but it, you know, I'm sure what you said is accurate too, that some towns may have abused it, but. But would you say that, but would you say that's accurate, that the policy is to encourage higher yield, higher density?
Um, I I don't, I I I think the policy is to prevent discrimination against certain types of developments in residential zoning districts. I don't, I don't know that state can come up with a policy that says higher density everywhere. You know, what they're saying is the town has to have some areas that allow for something. Which Town of Newington, in all frankness, Town of Newington allows multifamily developments. Town of Newington allows all kinds of things. So what will come to play in our regulations will not so much be these soft terms that, you know, we should be worried about because those were kind of not part of, at least not part of our regulations. They may have been in past part of some decision making, but you know, I wasn't here for that and I don't know what had transpired ten years ago. The regulations are going to be more problematic to me when it comes to uses and inability to regulate by in impact of something. That's what I am concerned with and that's what we will have to look into.
Mister, Mister Chairman, just as a notation, it does appear that we lost Commissioner Levarie at some point and I can't tell you when.
Okay.
Just to, just so you're aware.
Thank you, sir. Um. Luckily, the votes are passed, so it's not an issue, but.
Yes, and we still have a quorum as well.
Okay. All right, we do. All right, um, thank you again, Renata, and um let's move on to our agenda. Section seven, item B, Town Council Liaison Communications. I believe the.
Mr. Draco is not here tonight. I didn't hear from Ms. Braverman, so there won't be anything.
We will skip that. We'll go to uh uh section C, pond life, research and education. Uh, Commissioner Paschek, do we have an update this month?
Uh, most of my affiliations and constituents in the science field of this research have had their own flood concerns on their properties around the world. Fires, smoke, Seattle, Italy, I can go on. For many countries of people that I've worked with our research, we're all taking um time off from what we've been doing to survive in this time. So I'm not gonna be submitting anything until probably the fall. But I do have a observation that I would like to allude to, is not new, but now it's more dramatic than it has been in the past. I grew up in the era of the Connecticut license plate, save Long Island Sound. That was based on downstream effluent and pollution and transferred to Long Island Sound through stormwater and pesticides and herbicides. And now we're in that arena in a larger scale than we were back then due to what we see now every day around the world, including what what right where we live here in Newington. So my concern is ponds are taking in herbicides and pesticides from adjacent lots, parks and places that are grassed, um sloped areas from lawns. People are still using pesticides and herbicides sold in markets where they probably shouldn't be, or they have things stored in their garage or in their basement that they're still putting on their lawns. And all this is going to our water courses and going to our reservoirs and down into Long Island Sound. So that's my take for tonight. So it's something we should all continue to think about is managing what we put on our properties and ends up polluting our waters. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Paschek. Uh, I think that concludes our agenda for this evening. Uh, may have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman John.
Moved by Commissioner Bishant. Do I have a second?
Second there.
Second by Commissioner Casa Santa. All in favor? Voice vote. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Night, all.
Enjoy the rest of your summer. Enjoy your, enjoy your August. Bye bye.
Bye.
Good night.